Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Finance, June sixteenth, twenty twenty. Councilmember Wyatt.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Goulamback.
Here.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
Council President Friggin.
Here.
Quorum is present.
All right, from the top.
Item number one, armed guard services for City Hall.
Items open.
Okay, this item is open and it says we're supposed to have the Commissioner to talk about the Commissioner Lockwood is supposed to talk about this item.
And Mr. Chairman, representatives from BPD were supposed to be attending. They're having some technical difficulties at this time. If you would like to go out of order and still work, we're trying to get them in for later on in the meeting.
Okay, let's do that then. We can, we can hold it in advance for now.
Motion to hold in advance?
Yeah. Next item.
Item number two, deficiency note resolution fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Items open.
Okay, this item is open and we have the Controller's Office on and um we just got an email from Jeanette Rowe from the Executive Director of BFSA regarding, did you all get this item, this letter? Controller's Office?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to speak to that item? The letter that you received from her?
Uh, we just took, uh, we just took a look at it and I think the main thing is, as we stated last week, time is of essence. It takes time to get this uh bond issuing or deficiency note issue. We're based off that letter, I believe, on the BFSA stated that they will be able to issue the rate at point, point one five BPS compared to the city of Buffalo, which is like uh, a reduction, almost like forty thousand dollars in savings. If they was, if they were to issue it on, 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 instead of the city of Buffalo issuing. But one thing, they, the BFSA didn't state that they would issue it. They stated that we should go out and look at uh other companies or banks to see if we can get a lower interest rate. So right now, we do have a interest rate of one point two two percent for the potential loan. BFSA saying that they can get it at lower by a point one five. But they didn't, like, as stated, they didn't offer that they would do it for us. Time is not on our side. One thing we have to remember is we're trying to close out fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. The year closes out on June thirtieth. In order for us to get our work done and to get this deficiency note issue in a timely fashion, our goal was to issue, have this resolution approved by June eighteenth or June nineteenth, either one of those days. If we were to go out and go to the bond market and get the information to the necessary lenders, we would not make that date by June thirtieth. And then another thing, and we thank the BFSA for what they've done, but they also didn't issue the cost of issuance. And one thing we have to take, remember is that its costs incur when you borrow money. Right now, we even incur almost like twenty thousand dollars just for our bond counsel and our um financial advisor, which I think estimated around twenty thousand. So now, we still have to pay them. And then if we go and either the BFSA or any other entity loan, the city of Buffalo money, it's going to be additional costs for their bond counsel and for their financial advisor. So it's like double dipper right now. And then where's the cost savings at?
Um, and reading the draft term sheet, it said the authority for and purpose of issuing it, issuance in estates that the common council adopted authorization on June ninth, was that a mistake? Because that didn't happen.
Well, we know it didn't happen. It was in, it was in at the time was as if we thought it would be adopted last week. We understand you guys had questions. So that's not an actual contract. That's just uh, and I not even an agreement. It's just saying, issuing the terms of the other agreement.
Um, I, I just want to be clear that I hope that in the future that doesn't occur because it seems as though sometimes we take the common council for granted in that we're going to do something that we have every right to delay and look in and investigate. Um, so I just want to be clear, um, we're not a rubber stamp. We want the information. We ask for the information. Unfortunately, the BFSA didn't opine on the whole process because um, right now, we're looking at borrowing eighteen million. Is that the number?
Estimated, yes.
What estimated? Okay.
Yes, answer your question, yes. Well, and one quick, we understand that common council isn't a rubber stamp. We don't expect you guys to be the rubber stamp. We expect you guys to review and do your research on your end. Like we, like I said, since we've, uh, this group has started, uh, there's three bodies of government within City Hall, three separate bodies of government. You've got to have three different opinions. Everybody's going to do their research on their end. All we're saying right now is that we're at, we're at the point where we have to get this done. And you guys, and we've been, the controller, her team has been open to answer any questions. And one good thing, we have requested and asked our bond counsel and also our financial advisor to attend these calls. Anytime you guys want to have a conversation in regards to what we need to do.
Any, any questions, Councilmember?
Representatives from BPD, all we're saying right now.
Thank you. You know, um, with regards to the cost savings, I think what um, the council was trying to find out is what was the savings to the city? If there was an opportunity to save money in interest and borrowing and the cost of borrowing, I think that is something that we should try to um, find out. And unfortunately, this came to us almost at the very end where we had to hold off just to find out whether or not there was cost savings to the city of Buffalo. And I think we did the responsible thing by holding off. Unfortunately, I wish that we had dealt with this a lot sooner in terms of the bond, uh, Controller's Office, the Control Board, to figure out whether or not, before you came to us, that there was an opportunity for cost savings. And I think that's all we wanted to know at the last meeting. Can we save money for the taxpayers of the resident city of Buffalo? So I think we did well by holding off on this and hopefully in the future, we can get this information a lot sooner. So we're not pressed up against the timeline. So going forward, even in the future, if we're going to borrow, let's get together beforehand and find out whether or not there's a cost savings to the city of Buffalo by either borrowing through the Control Board or borrowing outside the Control Board.
Oh, and I, I, I agree. Um, one direction, we dig, I dig it from Controller this morning. And we also talked last week where we will get the BFSA involved earlier. I don't think that was done in the past, uh, but seeing the questions that you guys had last week and the questions you still have now, we will, that's the direction that the Controller gave, uh, her staff was to reach out to the BFSA going forward and beginning the process. So we can answer these questions and also get you guys uh, involved or at least put it on your radar of items um, that we plan on doing. So it's a learning lesson, I, I think for all of us. Uh, but we'll, 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 we'll get it done uh, going forward. But like I said, time is of essence. We're just trying to make sure we can close the year out and then uh, move forward.
So, so we don't have enough time to go back out. So we have to stick with the one point two two at this point, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions, colleagues? Councilmember Scanlon, oh, Councilmember Scanlon and Councilmember Friggin.
Thank you, Councilmember Wyatt. Delano, I think um, like some of the council members said, I think it was prudent for the council to kind of kick the tires and test, see what else was out there. But so I, I think we were going down the right path there. But I have a question. Um, I just want to be absolutely certain about this and maybe whether this is you who answers or Mr. Smith, who's with us again today. So I asked this last week. So the cost of issuance, will that negate the forty thousand dollars in savings that the, we would have benefited from by the, the Control Board doing the borrowing for us?
Correct. Not, maybe not a hundred percent of it, but the bulk of it, yes. As far as the potential savings that uh, the BFSA included, the forty K savings. We think with our, our costs incurred, as our bond counsel and our um, financial advisor, along with their bond counsel and financial advisor, we'll eat up uh, those potential savings.
Thank you.
Councilmember Friggin.
I'm sorry, Greg, I'm sorry. Did Greg want to say something?
Um, yeah, I mean, we're not sure what their cost of issuance are at this, is at this point in time. Also, I their letter, it says their predicted rate. I mean, we know what our rate is because of, you know, what our financial advisor did and, you know, he looked at other deals across the state. And, you know, we feel this is a um, a very good rate for the city of Buffalo. And, you know, they're just predicting based on their credit, our credit rating. And, you know, we're not sure what, what they could actually negotiate um, at this point in time.
Thank you, Greg. Council President?
Uh, thank you. Um, and thank you, um, Mr. Dow for um, uh, talking with BFSA and um, I think what's so important right now, the forty thousand dollars to me is not the issue. I, I, I'm not a, an accountant. It seems that if these rates are, and I don't doubt it, I'm going to go back in and do my own um, uh, counting to see. Um, I don't doubt what the Control Board is saying, but seems like there should be more than forty thousand dollars when we're talking about uh, savings, when we're talking about borrowing um, millions of dollars. And that rate is significantly different uh, from the Control Board. But I'll, I'll take that up at a, at another point. Um, I think what is so important especially, and I, I just want to be clear because this will not be the first or, well, will not be the last time, I believe, that the common council will ask for written proof. When we are talking about millions of dollars um, that have to eventually be paid by somebody. Um, and I think it is so important that we get on that page now um, that to just hear a verbal of, you know, the Control Board is not responding, the Control Board again canceled uh, their meeting. So I'll say this, and I know the Control Board is not on. I, I don't know the reason for the Control Board at this time. I, I have no idea. I, I know I might sound like Rich Fontana. But the Control Board is making a lot of money still to be in place and to not meet again, I think is a disservice. Why are they sitting there? Why, why do they go in every day? And I know this is preaching to the choir. But this common council and this city and the people have a right. If, if we're paying out of, out of state dollars or however the Control Board, really, out of, out of dollars that could be used somewhere else, a Control Board, they should be meeting. And they should be giving that advice to the council. And it shouldn't seem as if it is a battle uh, between the council or any other branch in government because we want to know the numbers. Because we don't want to leave a higher debt um, to kick down the road in two years and then have to look back. We got to be clear. This city is going to have to look at every penny, not in every penny of its spending, every penny of movement. So this is so important. So again, I want to thank you, Mr. Dow, but I don't have issue with you today. I'll be very honest. I have issue with the Control Board. And the fact that today is the sixteenth, we, we, we're just getting information to, today. So when we talk about, you know, our backs are up against the wall, it's not, I want to be clear, it's not because of the common council that the backs are against the wall. Because even when we, we pushed the deadline back for two weeks for the budget, I asked the question over and over, do, can, can this still happen? I was told, yes. I even suggested um, that you all should move forward with the paperwork way back then. So the paperwork, that you don't need the common council to start the paperwork. I want to be clear. And I've told the Controller that we would call a special meeting to make this happen. So nobody is, is delaying this. We want information and that's important. And in this fiscal climate and where we at right now, this will not be the last exercise. And if anybody is watching from the Control Board, and I think this council needs to send a letter uh, to the Control Board uh, that states our, well, you know, if there, if it's a majority, our disappointment in that they have not met, they have not advised. Because what I don't want to hear in another year, when somebody says some re-investigated reporter, well, the council could have got this cheaper. We don't have the information. We, all we know is what we just got today. I just printed it up. It's still warm. So thank you, Mr. Dow, but I'm, I'm very disappointed that this Control Board is not meeting. It is, I, I don't feel it is doing its job in, in helping um, with the finances of the city of Buffalo. They're sitting, I don't know what their budget is. It is large of what they receive to employ people. And at the end of the day, I'm not sure what they're doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, real quick, just to follow up, um, the controller and her team uh is available to, to discuss with whoever, the numbers. Uh, we, as you stated, we had our financial advisor, Rick. He went and got the data. He got the information. And that's the attached document you guys have, the quote from JP Morgan Chase. So we've been doing what we need to do on our end to get this resolved. We need the council to approve the resolution so we can complete the process. But I understand your frustration, your concerns. Um, any document, any paperwork uh, you guys need from us, as you know, we'll provide and hop on any call or attend any meeting to make sure you guys are comfortable with what you're looking at.
Anyone else? Okay, so is this a motion to approve or a motion to adopt? Karen, clerk?
Adopt, thank you.
Okay, motion to adopt. Seconded. Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
We will have to schedule a, a meeting of the common council. So I do, do want the common council members to know they'll be contacted um, after this meeting uh, for a special meeting to hold um, to move this item forward.
Thank you, sir. Next item.
Do we go back to item number one? I believe the police department is, is on now?
Yes, we've been joined by John Stancheck from BPD.
Motion to revisit item number one?
A motion to revisit item number one, seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Items open.
Okay. Mr. Stankway?
Stancheck.
Stancheck? Yeah, um, we got this item regarding the uh, security. And I just have one glaring question. Why did GS four, did GS four did not submit a uh, bid? Hello?
Yes, sir. This is Lieutenant Loski from the police department. An RFP was sent out. Uh, we got three responses. Uh, we can't really speculate as to why GS four was not one of the three respondents. But they were not.
Were, were they, was there a conversation with them?
Um, other than the public notice that we've sent out, we did, we had no, we had no private conversations with them regarding.
Morgan, no.
Okay, um, because I'm just a little perplexed that we're going with a whole new group. It seemed as though everything was working with the other group. And then this is going to cost us more to go with a new group.
Uh, I believe that the cost that was, was given of in their, in their proposal was actually some, some dollars less. I, I don't have my exact figures in front of me.
Okay. Well, well, there's a lot missing from this because all we have is a piece of paper. I don't have the entire proposal. At least from GS four, it had a proposal with some recommendations and some rec, and some uh, other details about their team. I have no idea what this group is. Is, am I missing something?
We do have, we do have the Secure Remedy team of the company. We do have their proposal uh, that we evaluated along with the other two that submitted. Uh, we didn't, we did not send that along today.
Which? Okay, well, we, we need that information because I'm not gonna, well, I'm not gonna want to approve something with just one piece of paper. Don't have any details about the organization or anything. It's just one sheet of paper. And again, that's come up kind of, you know, a little disrespectful to the common council that we get one piece of paper to approve an item of six hundred ninety thousand dollars, which seems to be a little bit more than what the other group were paying. And right now, we got to watch every penny. Um, but again, I think that we should have had more than just one sheet of paper um, regarding this proposal.
Um, yeah, this is John Stancheck. Um, actually, in evaluating this, the, the, at a normal annual year, G four S was going to um, be around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, you know, when uh, we did look at Secure Remedy, their, their hourly rate was a little lower and then their overall cost for the contract was lower. As far as only sending just one Pete or one page, I apologize for that. Um, but I guess um, we could get the Secure Remedy proposal over to you.
Okay, and, and all the things that you just said, I would have thought that we would have a summary outlining that. We, we don't have that. All we have is what you're telling us. And again, we need to see the, the information and documentation that support exactly what you just stated. Because at the end of the day, I'm looking at, we're paying, from what I see and what I have information access to, we're paying, we're paying more or less, you're saying you're the last, but it still, it seems to me more for a new group as opposed to the one we, we just had. And for me, and I'm just one council member, I didn't have any issue with GS, GS four. They seem to be working fantastic. It seems like whatever that, whatever things that we talked about or adjustments needed to be made, they made them. They were pretty friendly. Um, but I understand that's the process, the government process, so.
Yeah, we, we were at the five-year limit. So it had to go out to bid, even, even if we, you know, were all, you know, comfortable or with G four S. But, you know, we follow the, you know, city requirements and putting it out to bid. Um, as far as providing additional information, I can see what we can put together. Um, and who or how would we forward that um, to?
You, you can send it to the Finance Committee or to our chief, Chief of Staff?
Okay.
Any questions, colleagues? Anyone?
Yeah, it, um, Mr. Chair, you can go right, uh, so that it is filed publicly.
To the clerk?
So, yeah, it should go to the clerk and be filed publicly. I would be very specific on what we're asking, um, you know, um, as so that we don't get a document uh, that doesn't have um, all of the information in it. Um, so I'd be very specific so that we receive what, what you're requesting.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Um, Councilmember Wingo?
Um, this question is for B, uh, BPD. Simply, was GS four aware um, that the RFP was submitted? Was there any communication? I know this was danced around, but just were they aware that the RFP was due?
I, I can't, I, I know, I just know what, what, what we, what we did. We, it was posted to the city website. Uh, I believe an email was sent to their, uh, whatever, whatever email address we had on file for them. Um, uh, and it was, I believe it was a public notice in um, the Buffalo News. Whatever the legal requirements were uh, to publicly um, post this RFP. I, I gotta admit, you know, in my own course of duties, it's not something I do on a regular basis.
But who does? Who, who keeps, other than Jeff Ronaldo, who stays in constant communication with our armed guard security services for City Hall?
Um, most of the time, Captain Ronaldo has handled any issues. Um, I suppose if he asked me to do something for him in City Hall, I would have been happy to do it. But there's nothing, there's been no occasion where I've needed to do that. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, this isn't, this isn't, this isn't the time to discuss the specifics of the contract. But I'm, I am concerned, you know, I share the concerns with my colleagues that um, the current security guard firm has not even applied for this contract. I think we need to go back and see, or just ascertain why they did not apply. I think that's worth a conversation. I know this is just permission for us to enter into an agreement so that we can begin working on a new contract. But I guess my next question would be, when is their contract expiring?
The first of July.
Okay, and it's almost the end of June. How long does it take for us to ratify a contract?
Well, if um, i- if this gets approved at the next council meeting, we have a week to finish up the contract and uh, hopefully have everything in place by July first.
Okay, all right. Uh, well, I, I appreciate your answers, but um, I know that Jeff Ronaldo is the point of contact for the Buffalo Police Department. He was the individual who we had uh, basically interviewed or interrogated, I should say, regarding the initial contract with GS four. And I know that he probably has a lot of the more intimate details. But I think it's worth knowing why they chose not to. I think it's worth knowing why they chose not to enter into another contract or at least respond to the RFP. So now that we're going with the new company, there are going to be, I guess, some changes in their um, the, the contract that they offer us. Is that correct?
Um, uh, it's, you know, without, I, I, from, from what we, from the, the reading of the proposal, it appeared to be that everything was remaining the same. I, I can't speak to their personnel uh, whether or not they would be the, the same people working those posts. But as far as what we required from them, the, the new company was going to provide the same level of security as GS four is providing.
Okay, well, thank you for the time.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, shouldn't we have a representative on from their team addressing us as well? It just seems to me, this is, I don't know, it doesn't seem, and I'm not comfortable with this at this point in time. It doesn't seem like we're getting the answers. The fact that we got one page right up the, up front and there's speculation that it would have cost us more with um, G four. Um, we need to have an analysis that speaks to what their cost would have been for the next two or three years, as well as the cost of the new um, group. What, this contract is for how long?
Uh, the standard is, it's written up as a one-year contract with the option to renew up to four more years.
Okay, yeah, can you give us the specifics on those costs, an analysis on that, as well as the actual contract? Because again, we just have one page. Okay, any other comments?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll table this until we get that additional information. And then we'll go from there.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Council President Friggin.
Item number three, capital debt service fund fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
Items open.
And this item is open and we have the um, Commissioners Ettrich here to speak to this. Can you speak to this one, this item? Commissioner, how you doing today? You're muted.
How do we?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, that is filed by the Controller's Office and that is our annual debt service for the upcoming year.
Okay, Controller's Office?
Yeah, like we stated and um, at the caucus last week, it's just a, a, a letter, a memo uh, to the public and to the council indicating uh, the debt that's due uh, next fiscal year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. And just letting them know the money, uh, the funding that will be set aside for those two uh, payments to cover the debt expense for next year.
So the, so we're, right now, we're looking at a fourteen million dollar payment and a twenty seven million dollar payment. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then we're going to also add to that the, the new debt for the eighteen million, correct? Or no?
The eighteen won't be due, it, well, eighteen, you got eighteen months. It's, it's eighteen-year note. So we will have to pay it next year. We're setting this, what you're looking at now is the current debt the city holds. So I think altogether, it's around forty one million dollars, those two payments. So that's what we'll, we'll pay for the current debt we have. That's what we plan to pay uh, for next, next fiscal year.
So, so the eighteen won't be due, excuse me, go ahead.
Correct.
The eighteen won't be due until, what, twenty twenty one?
Correct.
So then, so we're going to pay the entire amount then?
Right now, that's the plan, but we got legislation where we possibly won't have to pay it all at once. And hopefully, we might be able to extend it. Uh, but based off the note, yes, in eighteen months, it'll be due, the eighteen million.
What, what is it, colleagues? Let me start hogging it. Anybody else have a question? What is it?
I'm sorry, King Greg, I'm sorry, Greg.
Can I, I, I'd just like to explain exactly what, so that's a, a
Can I, I, I'd just like to explain exactly what, so that's a communication that. So every year, the city sets aside in their first half um, collection period. And and this year, it's fourteen million dollars, so the first money in has to go to the debt service fund to pay those um. Debt obligations for the first half between um, July first and December thirty first. And that we do the same thing in the second half. We collect in the second half in December. The, the twenty something million dollars for those obligations that are due in the second half. And it's kind of a summary of the debt service budget that's in the back of the budget book. Um, and it's kind of just lays out um, each payment in in which half it is.
Okay, so, so next year, we would be, we'd actually have to include eighteen million in that. And so that eighteen million, would would that be the second half?
Um, it would probably be in the, it depends on when it's due, eighteen months from the close, so I would assume it would be in the first half.
Okay.
In the event that, you know, we, you know, if if there's money that comes in to to support the payment. Or as Delino said, if there's, if there's an ask for special legislation to long term indebted. Um, that note would be the other option.
So for instance, if that, if we were doing it now, or if it was, we took this loan last year or the eighteen months before. This would be eighteen million plus the fourteen if we were paying it the first half? Because we'd have to pay that total amount back at this point without the legislation.
Yes, that's correct. It, yeah, and then every year that that, you know, if, you know, the debt payments go. Change, not go down, but change depending on what, you know, if there's issuance of capital debt or anything like that.
But this is an eighteen month note. We'd have to pay eighteen million dollars back. It's not a partial payment, we have to pay the entire amount back. Will we be able to do that currently? If we had to incur the eighteen million plus the fourteen?
In the current budget year?
Yeah.
Um, I, that would be a budget question. That would, like, I don't, I mean, you'd, if you'd have to budget for it, and you'd have to set it aside.
Okay.
Because if you look at the budget, there's a line in the budget if, correct me if I'm wrong, Donna, that where it goes to the debt service budget.
Commissioner, um, the eighteen million, what is the impact on other things, the capital budget that other, the council members have? Every year, what would be the impact of that, on that, the funds that we use for capital budget?
If we pay the eighteen million?
Once we, once we incur eighteen million, that's one piece, and we know that there's a possibility of taking some additional money. For next year, but I'm saying right now, what would the end, is there an impact on eight, us borrowing this eighteen million on the capital projects we want to have in our districts?
You would not see it in the upcoming year, it would be in the following year, and then at that time, we may reduce capital borrowing, correct?
Okay. Okay, um, any other questions, colleagues? Okay, this is another adoption. Motion to adopt. Seconded by Councilmember Boingo.
Item number four, inviting B F S A to Finance Committee.
Items open.
This item is open, and I, we have not had conversation with the B F S A. Um, the last two meetings, as Council President stated, were canceled. And um, we're just befuddled, and I too agree what's going on. Um, we, we need their advice, we need their guidance, we're at a um, crossroads right now. And it just seems as though we're not getting that type of input um, that we desperately need. Um, I know they have a two o'clock call today. Um, I don't know if it's gonna take place, the last two were canceled. Um, so we're hopeful to get some information, um, but we really need their guidance. So we will be sending out another letter asking for them to come to the table to work with us through this process. Um, we understand the Controller's Office is able and give us information. Um, but as I stated previously, the Control Board has um, huge authority over us, even though they're soft. And with our current financial system situation, we want to make certain that the decisions that we're making um, are not gonna put us back. Um, with a higher control board. So we said, no, that's a letter that we, they sent, we sent it to us, so any other comments, colleagues?
Do we know how to even get on the Control Board's agenda to speak? Um, I know that we can get on to listen, but um, I think that sometimes we may be frustrated. Because we don't know, um, you know, how do we even get on to express to them? That their, their input and and assistance is so important. Um, we have not heard from them during, until the budget process was over, actually. And really still haven't heard from in a formal way, which they're supposed to opine before we even set a budget. Um, and now here we are at borrowing again, and we haven't heard from them. So um, could you, uh, you as the Finance Chair possibly check into, is there a way to get on the, on the agenda? To be able to be heard, um, because I think again, in this time, and I know I'm beating a dead horse. But in this time of um, financial crisis, we need everybody on board.
Thank you. Um, Chief of Staff, if you can send a letter asking, getting that information, we certainly would appreciate it. So hopes that we can be on their next meeting. I think they have another meeting scheduled for next month. Or is it, or is it, I think their regular meeting is the end of this month, I cr, I believe, correct?
Yes, sir, and I'll reach out to them right after this meeting to see what we can set up.
Okay, thank you. So motion to table.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Mister Chair.
Councilmember Boingo.
Thank you. Before we move forward to the next item, just just to piggyback on what was requested. As it relates to the common council being on the Control Board's agenda. Who's going to compile all of the concerns of the council members collectively? So that we can assure that all of our concerns are addressed.
Um, well, first of all, we wanted the, the Control Board to come to the uh, Finance Committee so that we could do that. And that didn't happen, so that will be my choice, is that they come to our committee meeting so that we can ask those questions. Instead of compiling a letter, um, have the conversation with them up close and personal. On where we are and have them opine on a number of issues, especially um, seeing that we're probably not gonna get this federal money. So we're gonna have to borrow, um, and just the, the process. Um, we have not gotten a contingency plan um, from the administration as of yet, so we need to hear um, from them. Um, what they, and what they've received and what their, their thoughts are. So that, again, we don't find ourselves on a higher control board in a year or two.
Yeah, but my question is, um, who's going to compile? This is, this is my concern, and then I'll just restate my question. My concern is. That they have our concerns documented on paper so that they can be prepared. To answer our questions. Uh, if we get to the meeting, I don't want them to feel as though if we railroaded them. Or blindsided them, I would prefer that we give them a list of our concerns, request to be put on the agenda. That way they can address our concerns on this agenda. But I want to know, uh, now, the question is, who's going to compile the concerns of the council members? So that they can be expressed in this letter, so that we have documentation, so that they can't say, well, we'll get back to you. Let's make sure that they have the questions beforehand, our concerns beforehand, so that they won't be able to say, we'll get back to you.
Um, anyone that has concerns can send them to the Chief of Staff, he will compile them, and then we'll have it as a official document. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next item.
Item number five, assistance with fiscal relief funds for cities and states.
Items open.
Okay, this item was sent by the Controller, and any comments on it?
I, I, I think that the, the, the main purpose of this uh, letter was just for the Controller to show her support. That uh, she agreed that the city and other municipalities do need federal help in order uh, to close out their year. And also to carry on uh, to uh, next year, so it's more like she wanted to put her voice out there to let her know that she's staying with the council, she's staying with the administration. And other municipalities.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dow. Any other comments? And motion to table?
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number six, April twenty twenty cash flow report.
Items open.
Um, as we, as, as we stated, um, that's April's report, uh, we're looking to have um, May's report. Uh, complete by either the eighteenth or nineteenth uh, this week, so yeah, Thursday or Friday, we'll have May a cash flow report. We'll do, we'll file it uh, with the, with the council, and then you guys can review the numbers, and I'm pretty sure we'll talk about it uh, next week.
Okay, Commissioner Esters, um, just a question, do we get the state aid, the ninety eight million?
It comes in at the end of the month.
At the end of the month, um, and we're, we're assuming that we're gonna get the ninety eight million, correct?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and currently, the, from what the cash flow says, we have a forty million dollar deficit for May?
Based off our, based off our projections, yes.
Um, it seems that there's a bit of excitement for um, shopping from the news. So maybe our sales tax number won't be as uh, devastating as we are thinking. Because I could not believe that um, at a number of stores, there were lines. I guess people aren't, are okay with the COVID. I, I'm not taking the chance, but hey, it it helped us in our numbers.
Um, we did look at our sales tax numbers, just so you know, and um, we, the ones that came in April were higher than we thought. May, you know, is just coming in right now, we haven't finished all that, and then half of June. So there, I mean, we had projected a twenty five and then a fifty percent reduction, and they're not coming in that low as of.
Okay, so those are those.
Agree with you, it may not be as negative.
Yeah, so those restaurants staying open or doing curbside has been a huge help probably, or the other activities that were going on still in spite of the COVID.
Correct, and the online purchasing.
Online, okay. Any questions, colleagues? Okay, motion to table. Seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number seven, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty third quarter gap sheets.
Items open.
Um, I mean, we, we spoke on this also, I think right now, we're really looking out, closing out the year. That third quarter gap report was really to uh, look at what the administration submitted in regards to their third quarter. And what they felt that we'll finish the year out. Um, and we basically did our analysis similar to the administration. And now it's really closing out our fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, uh, for the most part.
Any questions? Okay, all right, motion to table.
Item number eight, city financial status report.
Items open.
This report right here, uh, uh, the Controller felt the need um, to give, I think this is around. When COVID kind of first started, and I think we might have did an analysis, I want to say it might have been April, April actual numbers. And this is also something similar with, where we were kind of projecting to see where the city was at, at that point in time. We know we have more raw and real data at this point, actual data. And at the time that this report was submitted, it was far as projected to see where we, where were we correctly at? Where, where did the Controller's Office think we was at compared to uh, what the administration felt we was at? Uh, once again, it's really going back to how are we gonna finish the year out? Everything you're looking at now is based off projections, now we're really looking at actual numbers. With only what, fifteen more days left in uh, in this fiscal year.
Um, Commissioner, where are we looking at our total revenues to be for this um, fiscal year?
Uh, we reviewed um, just yesterday, kind of, we went over everything on the revenues. And uh, Jessica Brown's on, if you want to speak about it, Jessica, our Director of Administration and Finance.
Okay.
Bring up that date.
Administration and Finance, can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
Our third quarter gap showed about a fifteen point six million dollar deficit. After reviewing our current revenues and expenses, our revenues are gonna be a small amount lower than what we had anticipated. And our expenses have increased a little bit due to um, personnel costs, mostly from the protests. So between those two numbers, we think our debt's at about eighteen point three now.
Okay. So what's, what's that total number? So that's less than our budgeted amount was five hundred and eight million?
Right, we're about four hundred and eighty one.
Okay, forty one, in our expense?
Four ninety nine.
Okay, has, um, has there been further conversation about a contingency plan? Seeing that I've gotten heard information from a pretty reliable source, that we're not gonna be getting any type of federal funding.
Um, we, you know, once again, the mayor's office, we do feel comfortable that we will be getting federal aid. But we are um, working together to put something together for a contingency plan right now. That would be a little more specific, and we have some general outlines that we've provided to the Control Board.
Mm-hmm, when will that be shared with the council?
Um, when it's finalized with the Control Board, which will probably, as you spoke, there's another meeting, I believe it's June twenty fourth, will be the final. So it'll be filed before that.
Okay, well, I know there's a meeting, so you guys won't be at the meeting today at two o'clock? Okay, will you be talking about it then, or no?
Yeah, we'll be speaking about it, but there'll be nothing definite at that time.
Okay. Okay, colleagues, anyone, any questions?
We still feel comfortable that we will get federal aid. The borrowing is one of our contingencies for that.
Any questions, anyone? Okay, motion to table?
Motion to table. Motion to take the table, items twenty five and twenty six.
Motion to take from the table, items twenty five and twenty six, seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item twenty five, Assessment and Taxation Department, utilization of wireless air cars.
Motion to receive and file items twenty five and twenty six.
Motion to receive by items twenty five and so twenty six, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And response to um, unrelated, response to uh, comments on Facebook, people that are watching. Do you mind if I mention a meeting that we'll be having?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, for those that are watching via Facebook, uh, we have been working. Uh, diligently to schedule police oversight meeting next week, either Thursday or Friday. But it appears for now that it is going to be on Friday. We have invited the administration, the Commissioner, and whoever he deems necessary for the meeting. The meeting will occur, um, even if the uh, command staff decides not to appear. We encourage them to appear. We are considering at this point subpoenaing them. I believe every council member is on board. Uh, we asked the administration that they appear before the common council. To ask, answer concerns, not only that the common council has, but the community at large has as well. So the meeting, uh, it will be on Thursday, next Thursday, which is the uh, Mister Count, Chief of Staff.
Twenty fifth.
The twenty fifth, so on the twenty fifth, we'll be holding an emergency police oversight meeting.
Okay, well, we got fire, oh, excuse me. Did somebody?
Yeah, sorry. If we can just disclose the time of that meeting.
Gertha, is there?
Sort of time hasn't been set, still tentatively scheduling and trying to confirm which day and time. But we are working to try to get that to be around other Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday of next week.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll post that information, uh, give people enough time to uh, be able to. Um, be in attendance as well.
Okay, and also, since we have Facebook, we just want to let people, folks know that today is the last day to do your absentee ballot, correct? Chief of Staff?
Yes, sir, today's the last day to request an absentee ballot for the primaries at the end of the month.
Okay, and you can vote any location, early voting is taking place Monday through Friday from twelve to nine P M. You can vote at any particular site, you don't have to be in your district. Um, so please take advantage of early voting during the week, and then on the weekend is from twelve, eight, the first twelve noon to six P M. So please um, get out, exercise your constitution right and vote. Any other comments? Any other comments? Okay, motion to seconded by Council President Priggin.